Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Nashua Public Library and tonight our fourth in a series of candidate forums for this year's municipal elections. I'm glad to see so many faces in the room. It has been a real pleasure and privilege for the library to be a convening place for the community to learn more about the candidates that are running to represent all of you in city government for the next year. This is your first time in the library. I should introduce myself. I'm Jen McCormick. I'm the director of the library. I think I know most of you. Been here for a little over 15 years. It's the best job I've ever had and you'll be glad to know that this is the best library in New Hampshire.
Yes, true story.
If this is your first time in the building and you're feeling unfamiliar, there are restrooms right outside the theater, right outside that door and then around the corner. In case of an emergency, there's an emergency exit directly behind you that way and then another one through the Chandler Wing. I'd like to kick off tonight by thanking our partners in this endeavor. Nashua Inklink has been a fantastic partner helping us promote, writing the questions, being really supportive and being here for all of the forums. And especially want to thank Nashua Community Media. That's the crew you see around here with the cameras and microphones. They have worked countless hours in this building. What do I want to say? Getting themselves set up and running for live streaming and recording. So round of applause for them and then I'm going to pass it off to Carol.
I also want to thank everybody for being here. I'm Carol Robidoux. I am the publisher and founder of Inklink News and we are so happy to be in Nashua for the last year and a half. Having an event like this is just underscores, I think, the importance of having local media that is connected and caring about your community as much as you do. I want to thank also Jen and I want to thank the TV, the community television and I want to thank our emcee for the evening who you're about to meet. If you don't know him already, Rony Camille, who's a, he's, he just turned in his resignation to the CTAB but he has been on the board of the community television and is a very engaged partner in our community as well. So it expired, he didn't, he didn't, I don't know. It expired. Anyway, I also want to thank the candidates for being here tonight. It goes above and beyond all the door knocking and all the sleepless nights and all the strategizing just to sit here for an hour or two and field questions. But I think it's very honorable and telling that you're willing to field questions. A lot of these have come from Maya Blanchard, our City Hall reporter, and then we've incorporated questions that have come in from the public so, and we've collected some at the door. So I think it's going to be a fun-filled evening for all of us and have some fun, take a deep breath and thank you all for being here tonight.
Before we begin tonight's conversation, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of Nashua Alderman at Large Gloria Timmons who passed away on Wednesday. Ms. Timmons was a 20-year United States Army veteran, a former member of the city's Board of Education and a proud member of the local NAACP branch as its founder and president. She was serving on the Board of Aldermen at the time of her passing this week and was a strong voice to our community. Her grandson, Jordan Thompson, stated that, quote, "She was the light of many, always showing up others," and that she gave the same unconditional love to the city of Nashua. And he hoped that she would be remembered as a strong, passionate and brilliant leader who made a real difference everywhere she served. Ms. Timmons often said she entered public service out of love for her community and that commitment was clear in the way she lived and led. She was 73 years old and leaves behind her loving family and a grateful city. Please join me in a moment of silence in her honor. Two nights ago, the Board of Aldermen held a five-hour meeting where emotions ran high over encampment ordinances and public participation. Tonight's discussion will allow these candidates to show how they would lead in challenging during these challenging moments and how they define accountability and how they balance policy with people. Candidates, welcome. And so here's how the night's going to go. As I say, a date with Nashua's electorate. We're going to begin with some introductions, move into policy, the meat of the, of the night, and then we'll end with some closing remarks. Now candidates will have up to two minutes per question. The timekeeper, Ms. Holly, in the back. You see the candidates, there's a clock there. You don't need to go to up to two minutes. We'd like to keep moving. I don't want to repeat Tuesday. Candidates, this is your opportunity to introduce yourself or reintroduce yourself to Nashua voters. So let's dive in. Question number one. If I could pull it up. When you're not working or campaigning, what is your one favorite thing you like to do in Nashua? And how could the city make that experience even better for residents? Mr. Gueva, your first up.
Thank you and thank you for having me. What I like to do when I'm not in the chamber is really what connects off of Ward One is the Lincoln Park and Mines Falls area. Fantastic area to walk in, lot of resources in there and I think it's just a fantastic place to spend the evening.
Ms. Gray.
Yeah, so I, I'm not sure that I necessarily designate campaigning versus talking to people. The people of Nashua are what I love the most and visiting with them. So it's not about campaigning. I'm out there talking to people. If you know me, you know I talk. But just getting to visit people, we have our radio show and, you know, really getting to learn more about the people in this city, that's my favorite thing.
Ms. Kelly.
Thank you. When I have some time to myself or, I love to go downtown. My business was downtown for a long time and I just love our vibrancy. Judge Abels is one of my favorite places if I want to go and just hang out, have a cup of coffee, see so many people in the community. It kind of feels like Cheers in there. And I love to shop at all the shops, including Fort Engage.
Ms. Morgan.
Thank you so much. And I wanted to start by thanking the Inklink News Community Media and the Nashua Public Library for having us. One of my favorite things to do when I'm not working at Fort Engage or Coffee and Kindness is actually volunteering. That was how I really got introduced to Who Makes Our City Incredible was volunteering through the different nonprofits. And when I'm not doing that, my second favorite thing is meeting everyone's dogs. And yes, I will remember your dog's name before. I remember yours. Sorry, it's just how it is. I met one yesterday named Stanley. He was fantastic. I don't know his dad's name. And the second part of your question was in what can Nashua do to make more of that available? And so I've actually been working on that for the last five years is to make a public dog park come to Nashua right at Mine Falls. Technically not Mine Falls, but touching so that all the residents can enjoy the same things I do.
Okay. On the November ballot, voters will be asked whether Nashua should allow social districts. These outdoor districts area or outdoor areas are where people may consume alcoholic beverages purchased from participating establishments. If voters approve, the Board of Aldermen will determine whether where these such districts could operate. What are your thoughts on creating these social districts in Nashua? And how would you balance downtown vitality with neighborhood quality of life? We're going to go backwards this time. Ms. Morgan.
I don't want to say this could be another five-hour Board of Aldermen meeting, but it could be. The way that the question, for those who don't know what it is, is the way it's written on the ballot is the way that the state designated. So it is not the sitting for Board of Aldermen that decided that, so we'll let them off the hook right from the start. And it is a little bit confusing, but basically the question, if you say yes or no, is allowing the Aldermen to have that conversation and designate what that looks like. And so really it's the will of the people. If the people say yes, I'm happy to support it. If they say no, I'm happy to support that too. The second part of your question and what that would look like and balance of vitality and, you know, the safety of our downtown, assuming that this would be something that we do special occasions for the example of, say, the holiday stroll that's coming up this Saturday after Thanksgiving, please come, is, could work. It would be interesting to see how that works and nothing is permanent. If it doesn't work, the Board of Aldermen could in the future say, you know what, this isn't working. But we can't be afraid to try these things to enhance the vitality and support our downtown businesses, restaurants and bars wherever it may be, whether it's downtown or in other districts in the city in the future.
Ms. Kelly.
Can I not go after her? She basically stole my answer. So yes, the question on the ballot is just to allow the Aldermen to speak to it and then also debate whether or not we want that in Nashua. Most of the Aldermen who have talked about it have been really within that realm of like, do we have it at events? Can we have it at the Pride Festival? Can we have it during the stroll? That sort of more limited scope. I don't know how I personally feel about it yet, but I think it's really important that we hear from the voters and that if we are allowed to have that opportunity to talk about it, that we look at both the economic vitality of downtown and what the business owners might need, but also the safety of it.
Ms. Gray.
So being in the State House, I was, I'm a state representative for those of you that don't know, and there was a lot of discussion about what this looked like, if this just looked like people walking around town, you know, with drinks and stuff. And ultimately, we decided that it should be up to the cities, that it has to come back to the cities to decide because every city is different in the state. You know, I certainly think that there are times when it could be appropriate versus not appropriate, but the most appropriate action is to let the citizens decide. And then also to understand that if you say yes, let's look at it, then it's up to your elected officials who you choose to make that best decision. And I think that, you know, they're going to weigh in what income is in the city, you know, a lot of different things, parts of that. I'm not sure that it's always the best idea, but certainly we've seen other areas revitalized with, you know, a beer garden for a special occasion or something or maybe a tasting thing, but it's certainly not, we're not talking about just letting people carry around open containers and stuff. So there's a lot more that's going to go into this and I do think the question was confusing. But I would ultimately have to say, let's see what the citizens say first and then, you know, work with that and make sure that's going to work in Nashua, keeping in mind that, you know, you have safety things, you have all kinds of different things that come up with that, so.
Mr. Gueva.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I agree with the social districts. I think it's a great economic development tool. On the Board of Aldermen, serve as the vice chairman of planning and economic development committee and in that time, we've talked about different ways and different tools that we could put inside the tool belt on how to really make Nashua an even better place in a way we can attract more in instead of pushing out to other communities. And when the state gave us the opportunity to put this on the ballot and let the citizens decide, I think that's fantastic. The power right now is where it should be, which is in the people in Nashua. And if they decide that this is the way we want to go forward, I plan on embracing it fully. And now, to me, a social district wouldn't mean we're turning into Vegas where you could have a beer, walking up and down Main Street whenever you want, but a certain time and place. Holiday stroll is a prime example. I see nothing wrong if we were to create a temporary social, a social district downtown for the holiday stroll. You could get a beer somewhere, walk down, I think it would just be fantastic and just another tool in the tool belt that our city could use. So I'm a big supporter of it. I hope the voters can embrace it and I think this is something that could really make Nashua kind of on the, on the cutting edge of it and getting in on it early.
Okay. Well, thank you, all four of you. Moving on to the Elm Street Middle School redevelopment. Two potential developers for the redevelopment of the Elm Street Middle School property are Penrose and Leasing Melborne Group, LMG. Penrose is proposing 168 to 184 units with 10% of those units being at the 10% area median income, what we call AMI tier, and the average of all affordable units being below 60% of that AMI. LMG is proposing 269 units with 59 affordable housing units at 60% and 237 the remaining at the market rate with a mix of multifamily units for sale townhomes. What, which proposal are you in favor of and why? We're going to go this way. Mr. Gueva.
Thank you. Once again, planning an economic development committee, we've had a lot of conversations about it. We've had a lot of special Board of Aldermen meetings about this, going over these big two proposals, Penrose and LMG. Personally, Lansing Melborne Group, I think, is far and above the better proposal solely because we have a housing problem. We need units. I'm not going to pick a plan that takes away units. We need to build, build, build. And I think I will, I will pick whatever proposal says we could build more on that lot because you're going to have one chance to develop a lot like this somewhere in the prime of downtown, so we better not mess it up. And we need housing. I'm willing to build. I'll pick whatever, whoever wants to offer the more units, that's what I'm doing.
Ms. Gray.
And I would agree. I think at this point, we know that we're at beyond critical mass for the need for housing, so I would pick the one that would have more units because I think that would help overall. That's going to be an interesting situation because we also have KEEF. We have a lot of people that feel strongly about that down there, so we definitely need to look at, you know, whether or not the KEEF is going to work and how that can incorporate. But I certainly think that incorporating it with as many houses as possible would help because you're also going to have to look at, can we put restaurants? Can we do other things like that down there? And so the more development we can bring there responsibly, I think, the better for our city overall.
Ms. Kelly.
So this is an active piece that we're actually talking about and negotiating, so I'm just going to talk about affordability in general. I think that, you know, as someone who started the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we put our number one goal as units, units, units. I think both bring great amounts of units in a place that is going to, you know, really have some great green space. So ultimately, units are so important to our housing infrastructure because we just, we have less than, I believe it's 0.1% and maybe less at this point vacancy, which pushes up rents and makes it just so unaffordable to be able to live here. Like right now, nurses, all of those people who come into our, our great city to work, they can't even afford to live here. So whatever units come on, continue to help to build that. And that is something that I've been really strongly advocating for on the board for the last eight years.
Ms. Morgan.
So I was able to go to both of their presentations and I will tell you that both were great. They had different amenities for the people, not just that would choose to live there, but within the neighborhood abroad with their look and feel to make sure that this, while this may be a brand-new development, it still looks and feels like Nashua, which was really important when we were talking about units, when I chaired the Imagine Nashua Master Plan. We talked about look and feel of our communities a lot and that the nostalgia piece that Alicia had brought up about the KEEF auditorium was also, you know, a hot-button topic there that people just really love to keep the things that make Nashua Nashua. So everyone is right, we need more units. So that's about 100 more units and that's 100 more families, that's 100 more nurses, that's 100 more teachers that could live there if they can afford it. And I think we could push back a little bit. 54 units doesn't really sound like a lot. And with the situation that we're looking at right now with our housing crisis and our unhoused and Lansing Melborne has been proven to be a great community partner. They built a flat sun high that opened. And what you may not know is they came around to all of the downtown businesses and they said, hey, we want to send welcome letters to every single one of our people when they move in, telling them who's here, where to go, what to do, and really welcome them into the community. So I'm excited to see them do the same thing with another additional 260-plus units and really be able to support the continued growth, but safe growth within our city as well.
Let's talk about it. Nashua's 2024 property tax rate is $15.90 per $1,000 of value. That rate is lower in some other large New Hampshire city communities, but many residents still find it difficult to afford. If elected, how would you work to keep the tax rate manageable while maintaining essential services? What would you prioritize and what would you avoid cutting? Mr. Gueva.
Thank you. And this is a great question and the reason I got into this, this whole realm is Ward One Aldermen in the first place, taxes. It's everybody's pocketbook issue. It's the number one issue I hear at doors. And what we need to do, in my opinion, we need to continue to grow the base. Right now, residential pays the higher share against, against businesses when it comes to the tax levy. We need to even that out. We need to get more businesses in. We need to keep building residential so that we can get more of the tax base in. Now, when we look at, when we look at our tax rate and compare it to others in other communities, I really think it's kind of an apples and oranges comparison. There's a lot that goes into how we establish a tax rate and jumping up and saying, oh, Manchester's this, Concord's that. I personally don't feel that's a, that's a very fair equation to look at. We can only control what we can control. What I'm hearing here is that taxes and affordability in the city are extremely high and we need to do something about that. We need to tighten up the belt and we need to make some tough decisions. I mean, we have, we see about a 6% tax increase every year. It's nothing that I'm going to support and as an Alderman, I haven't supported. We need to make this place affordable for everybody. And what we're seeing now is, it's tough because you need to prioritize what you want to do. My day job, I advocate for firefighters up at the stay house. We can't cut our police, we can't cut our fire, we can't cut our schools, but we need to take a long look in the mirror and figure out these long-term discussions on how we do it. And I think a lot of this turns into the long-term planning of the city. So with me, I'm going to continue to do what I've done on the board, which is give alternative suggestions on how we budget and as well is look at everything from a 10,000-foot level and look at how we look not just this year and next year, but five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. So that's what I would do to keep taxes in check. Thank you.
Ms. Gray.
And I think, you know, this is something that every single door, we have talked about affordability, taxes, and it's something that is just becoming untenable. And we're really in a tough position here in Nashua and really all the cities are because there are so many things that are mandated by the state, but yet they don't fund or they underfund. And then that puts it on the backs of who we have at the city. And one of the biggest problems with that is, is we don't have enough accountability with communication and putting the responsibility where it should be. Why are they so high? Why are out-of-state companies getting tax breaks and not our mom-and-pop shops, not our people that are working so hard? Every single dollar is important that comes out of somebody's pocket. Every single dollar, that is an investment in our city. So while we do have this immense amount of pressure from a state who fixes the tax rate for us, who says how much we have to spend, you know, in 1970, they said that we had to do so much for teachers' retirement and first responders' retirement, but then the state continued to kick back what they were going to actually contribute. So while we're working on a partnership with the state to make this appropriate and make this fair, we have to watch every single dollar that's going out. We have to make sure we're investing in things that long run are actually going to save us money. Our infrastructure, other things, we have to make sure that we're being responsible with grants that are coming in so that those things, we can use those to help build more income for our city by attracting people. This is a multi-level process and I think one of the biggest things we have is this communication piece. We have to let people know why there is this downfall, what we can do and push the state to be more responsible with what they're contributing.
Ms. Kelly.
Thank you. So I'm going to continue doing what I've been doing. I've been on the budget committee for eight full years and I've loved every moment of it. It has actually brought a budget book, but it's a lot cleaner than the ones we get as Aldermen. We usually have it all tabbed up and we get it in a binder and we really spend a lot of time looking at line by line. And the reason we do that is because by the time the budget hits us, 90% of it is already figured out. That is personnel, that is wages that have already been negotiated that we cannot change. Anything else that has come up, like for example this year, the school contract for the buses was up 21%. Nobody else bid on that. That wasn't anything we could change. We had to adjust for it. So we look at all of those factors and then whatever's left is where we start to look at. Where can we cut here, cut there? But it is a very tight budget by the time it even gets to us as Alderman. And I don't think people fully understand that. Like by the time it gets to us, it is, most of that's decided. I will say that this year specifically, we really pushed to start lower on our percentage. I think the mayor was up a couple of percents and, you know, I specifically said, no, I want to start lower because we need to start lower and tell us what that looks like and then we can move up versus if you start high, you just keep going higher. And I also ask that we start earlier because the more time we have to scrutinize line by line in this book, the more we can really look at it and make sure that every dollar is accounted for. So I think those are the two things. In terms of prioritizing and how we can actually save money, infrastructure is something I talk about all the time. There's been a lot of years where we don't do the things that we need to do. We haven't taken care of the roads. We didn't take care of Stellows or we pushed it because of, you know, the inability to be able to pay for it at that moment. And it ends up actually costing us more dollars at the end.
And to just follow up, Mr. Gueva or Ms. Kelly can answer this. When does the budget process, for people at home in the audience that may not know how municipal finance works, when does that process start here in Nashua?
It depends. It depends. It's actually, in prior years, it started pretty early and then we have COVID mixed in there. So, you know, sometimes March, April, but it has to be finished by June-ish. So we, you know, the earlier we can get started, the better, but we also need to give the departments enough time to get their budgets together and make sure that they're comfortable with what they're going to do.
To follow up on that, either you that are currently on the board or actually, you know what, I'll open up the, I'll for you. Would you move for a motion to move the budget cycle earlier and also doing some for, some financial forecasting five years ahead of time so that departments know what to expect year after year?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, I would. I mean, we can't do much about, we have our fiscal year, July 1 is when it starts and that's when it ends. We need to hit that deadline, but as far as starting it, I believe, full-heartedly, our directors and our managers can come up with their budgets early if we tell them to do it. I think they can absolutely adapt.
And they did this year.
Yeah.
Because we asked for it.
Ms. Gray.
I would agree. I think it's a change in pattern and I think that can be hard sometimes, but it's also important. Sitting on the, the county delegation, you know, there are things that come up very last minute that it would be nice to have, you know, we have, you know, fought to keep it under a certain rate or whatever and we just didn't have enough time to really look at things and see if there was another alternative. So I think moving it sooner would be a great idea.
Ms. Morgan, thoughts?
So I'll answer this and then I'll go back to my first question. So that is the assumption, that's running on the assumption that they're already not doing that. And if you've had any time to sit down with any CFO of any large company, they're literally doing that all the time and I would hope and imagine that ours here in the city are as well and are forecasting for, you know, the next five years, 10 years, whatever that may look like and running different scenarios. And if they're not, well, we should be. But back to your original question, so when we're talking about taxes, what we're really talking about is affordability. And affordability to live here, affordability to build your dreams here or to make sure that your grown children don't have to move back in with you here and that, right? So when we're out and I'm meeting with neighbors and we're having a conversation and I'm asking them, well, what does your budget look like? They're having conversations at their kitchen table where they are worried about the $4 Medicaid increase for their 50 cent prescription each. And that's real. And so we have to treat every single dollar on our budget the same way that we're, that our citizens and our constituents are. When we're looking at a budget and we say, oh, you know what, $100,000 isn't really going to move it that much. $10,000 isn't really going to move the needle that much on your taxes. The answer is that attitude is not going to move the needle and we need to reflect our values that we're having at the kitchen table every single day. And prioritizing is going to be our unhoused crisis and the ordinances that we just had that passed. We've been passing off a lot onto our nonprofits to be able to raise and support and they've been doing a hell of a good job for, for what they have. But it is going to get worse before it gets better. We're seeing SNAP benefits that are going to end in a couple of days. We're seeing our ACA Affordable Care Act that's going to end and people are getting their renewal notices in a couple of days. So people are going to get a lot more scared before, before they're able to. And we can't keep pointing at the state and saying, you know, they're not doing what they're doing or the federal government isn't. No one's coming to save us. We have to do the work ourselves and roll up our sleeves and get ready with, sharpen that pencil to support every single taxpayer here in the city. And I would not cut fire or police.
Thank you. And for the record, the tax rate is set by the state.
Yes.
Not the local municipality. Moving on, it is estimated that there are currently 100 homeless slash unhoused people living in the city. What can the city do in both the short term and long term to address this? What can the city do in both the short term and long term to address this crisis? And what is the doing, what is the city doing well, and what should be done differently? Mr. Guevara.
Thank you. And I think this is the, you know, the big question going around the city right now. What's happening? What are we going to do? And I think, uh, last Tuesday, or Tuesday night, after our Marathon Board of Aldermen meeting, uh, we came up with action. We heard from our, we heard from residents, we heard from our downtown business owners, we came up with a solution. We compromised on that solution over two extremely long meetings, and then we, and then we passed. Uh, we passed some legislation that, no, it's, you're never going to solve the homeless problem. This did not solve it. I'm not going to say it solved it, but it shows that we're dedicated to, we're dedicated to action. And I think what we need to do is, we're hearing it, we needed to react, now we need to look at more and more of what we can do for future planning. And I think, uh, my colleague right down the table put in legislation for a Resource Center Trust Fund. Fantastic piece. I co-sponsored it, look forward to supporting it when it comes to the full board. And that's what I feel this whole conversation started was, all right, now we need to get our act in a line. This was just one piece, now it's the following pieces and what we do to continue to solve this issue. Once again, we're, it's going to be extremely hard to solve. A lot of people who don't want help, and then we have people who do, and anybody who wants help should be able to get it, hands down, 100%. I don't think there's anybody in this room who would say, oh, you know, you want help, but no, we're all set. We're, we're good. No, and it's, it's partnering with our nonprofits. It's continuing to do what we've done, and I think with, uh, with the encampments now, we're going to be relying on these nonprofits a little bit more, and we're going to be looking for long-term solutions. Like I've said, we need to start looking at more of the long terms. Uh, in my ward, we had Selina Avenue, which was a hotbed, and there's campers back there today I heard reports of. So we had an ordinance, unfortunately, the board didn't pass it, but there is more that we can do, and I won't stop working until we get that done.
Ms. Gregg.
So I think that, I mean, this is a, a problem, um, homelessness that has gone back to biblical days. I mean, it's something that nobody has ever really solved, and we certainly have a, a situation right now where we're probably going to see even more people becoming homeless. I think in the short term, what I have seen the city do right is see these people as people. I hate to hear somebody say, well, where are you going to put them? They're people. You don't put people somewhere. You have to see them each as individuals. And I think long-term, that also helps because I always say, if you have met one homeless person, if you've taken the time to talk to one homeless person and, and understand their plight, then you know one person, and that's it. Each plight is very different. The reason people are not accepting help is very, very different. Um, you know, it, it could be that they're tired of failing, you know, because they're in this situation, not because they chose to be, and certainly not because, you know, some are down on their luck or whatever, but maybe they've made challenging choices. If we continue to just throw money or say, I'm going to do this one little service, that's not helping them in the long term. There are places like in Austin, Texas, where they have, I believe it's called Village First, where they've started doing these sustainable communities where they actually teach, they take people who are chronically unhoused, they have, um, places where you can get car work done in there, but they teach people actual trades. They have a bed and breakfast, people can go stay and see how it works. They show them how to garden, they show them how to take care of a home, they give them life skills. I would like to see us doing more all-encompassing things right now. We have amazing services and amazing experts in this city, and it comes in direct conflict sometimes with other, you know, people that are not unhoused, that are living their lives because we have all the services right here on Main Street. So that's where people are going to focus. They're going to be here where their services are because they're trying to survive. So really, that push is getting them, how do we move to that next level? And I think it's time to start getting creative.
Ms. Kelly.
It'll come, it's no surprise that I did not appreciate the, um, passing of the ordinance the other evening. I love that we all are allowed to have our own opinions around, um, the horseshoe, but I was vocally against this because it is not proven to work. Criminalizing homelessness only puts people continually in that cycle and does not get them out. Uh, what does work is housing first, getting people into a stable position and then helping them with the services. It, what also helps is supportive housing. So you're, you have a case manager, you're working through whatever it is that, you know, ended, you made it so that you did not have a home, and they are constantly helping you to get on a path to, um, being independent. And that is what we know is what works, and we've been told that by our public health, by social workers, all the people who are doing this work day in and day out. Um, so in the short term, we need to focus on that. We've been talked to by our public health department about a resource center. That's why I put in the legislation to make sure that that happened. Um, I think it was deprioritized from a perspective of what we wanted to, uh, look at for projects, and now here we are. So, um, I have been working very diligently with, um, nonprofits and all of the, um, city departments to come up with what that looks like, but the short-term solution's going to use some creativity, and the long-term is something we're already working on. We're already working on making sure that we get more units on, um, in Nashua because that's what we need at all levels in order to allow people to come here, to bring rents down, to be able to buy a house like David and I did, you know, what was it, 16 years ago? I can't, and this is very true for anybody in New Hampshire, most people cannot afford to buy the house that they live in now.
Ms. Morgan.
So I want to echo, uh, what everyone said. We're, we're, we're not here to fix homelessness, we're not saviors, right? We're not magic makers, um, we're people, and we're representatives of, of the people. And so we have to thank our, our first responders, we have to thank our public health workers, uh, both the city and within our community, and all of our community health workers and nonprofits that have been doing this work for decades, um, and have been doing this work for the last year and have been asking us, the Aldermen or city, to do something more. And, um, and here we are. So last night, I was, had a meeting, um, with a couple of residents in Ward four, and they were feeling really dismayed, um, about the decision from the Board of Aldermen that passed. And for everybody else that is feeling that way, there is hope because what has happened is that, yes, that passed, but here's what comes next. I know our nonprofits are fired up, our community health workers are fired up, Shoshana is fired up.
I am.
And so now we're going to see a shift in that conversation. We're going to see a shift in priorities of, of our budget, we're going to see a shift in priorities of projects. You mentioned that was on the list, maybe it wasn't one of the top three that we chose to fund and move forward with, um, maybe it was six or seven, but now it's going to be number one. And so you're going to see an outpouring of support from volunteers and people raising their hand and saying, what can I do? And that's what I love about Nashua. We show up. It doesn't matter how hard it is, it doesn't matter if it's raining outside, we're going to show up and we're going to get the work done, and we're going to do it for each other. And I'm excited and I hope to earn your vote so that I can join, hopefully, well, not all of you, I guess. Uh, but to do the work together.
Okay.
The majority.
All of us, yes.
All right.
Three out of the four.
Okay. Um, which leads me to kind of a candidate direct questions and, um, which are from the Inkling questionnaire, and hopefully we'll answer some of our audience submitted questions. We're going to go to, uh, Ms. Kelly. You express support for the Department of Public Health and Community Service Plan for a resource center for the unhoused homeless population. Legislation has been referred to the Budget Review Committee related to the funding of this center. How do you foresee a resource center, uh, operating and how will it help the current crisis here in the city?
Thank you so much for the question. So, uh, the public health has come before us, um, requesting a resource center. Their long-term vision had some housing in it, looking for a really brick and mortar so, um, opportunity to help people. The idea of a resource center is that we will have a place for people to come during the day. Ideally, they would have a place to do shop, do, you know, take a shower, do their laundry, um, and that the services that they need will be there, uh, whether that's welfare, uh, community health workers, mental health, Revive, all of those people would sit there and be able to, so you can come to one place and get your services, um, you know, get whatever you need to get going for the day, um, and really make it centralized. And it is, it is the gold standard for how you help people, um, out of, you know, homelessness. So I think where we're going to end up is piloting something in a, in a, you know, a space for now, um, and, and really reading out to the community how that went, and then looking for a more permanent, uh, location for a resource center. But the idea of it is a place to go, um, during the day because basically what happens, I've been on the soup kitchen board for eight years as well, actually, got it right as I, uh, became an Alderman. Um, but, you know, you go to, you go have breakfast at the soup kitchen, uh, and there's no place for you to go until dinner, uh, when they open up again for, for that. And then if you get a shelter bed, great, you have somewhere to go. If not, you do that cycle all over again. So having, and it's not just a place, okay, where you're going to go sit there all day. It's really about making sure that they're given, getting the help that they need, um, in a really supportive environment.
Ms. Gregg, in response to the Inkling questionnaire, you said that to lower the tax rate for Nashua residents, your strategy would be, quote, "protect our strong fiscal management while easing that burden by using resourcing, resources efficiently, pushing the state to fund its fair share, and partnering with nonprofit and businesses so taxpayers aren't carrying the full cost of services." If elected, how would you push the state to fund its fair share, and what do you think that fair share is?
Well, I certainly think education is one of our biggest dilemmas that we have currently. So the cost to educate a child is about $22,000. Um, and it's constitutional within this state. We have to provide education for children. Unfortunately, the state, I believe, um, it's, well, it's been shown over and over that it is, uh, not constitutional. They provide just over $4,000 per student, which means that the rest of that has to fall on the taxpayers. So one of these things is having these conversations and getting people who are electing people to understand that this is what's happening. There's a lot of kind of like, uh, chess game, moving around the cups and hiding the ball and stuff and saying, well, this isn't really the problem, or why is it costing so much, you know, to educate kids or whatever? You know, there's building costs, there's all kinds of different things. So I think part of that is making sure, it's a communication piece, and communication is one of my really, um, hallmark things that I want to push, and that is helping people understand when you're electing officials, what, what we're looking at. Right now, the governor of this state, who knows that this is, this is what's happening is, knows the, the decision that the Supreme Court has put out, um, and said, well, we're, we're still not going to fund anymore. The Supreme Court said, no, the state has to fund this. She lives here in Nashua. She has to know. It's up to us Nashuans to tell her, this is a problem. Like, this is not, it's, it's not that it's not fair, it isn't fair, but it's not even constitutional. When the state says we have to do things, and it's in our constitution that this has to be funded, the state should be on the line for that. We have let it go for far too long by letting disinformation happen and saying, okay, well, it just must be our city not doing it right. That's not it at all. As far as states go, we are the lowest, the bottom of the totem pole on how we fund these things. That's a problem.
Okay, as we continue to talk about taxes, Mr. Guevara, in response to your Inkling questionnaire, you said the ease, the, to ease the tax burden, you would focus on, quote, "limiting new bonding, prioritizing truly essential projects, and streamlining city departments to cut down on duplication." You said this means, quote, "relying on attrition and thoughtful staffing decisions to make sure we get the most out of our workforce while keeping services reliable and affordable." What departments or staffing positions do you feel are being duplicated, and how, and how should it be better streamlined?
Sure. So I, I think the one that screams to me right off the top of our head is community development and economic development. Do we need two different departments for that? Or could we merge those into one department who does the job? Because the one thing I've noticed from being on this board for four years now is whenever we're making a big decision about economic development, community development, both directors and both of their staffs are always there. Sure, I think we absolutely need both. I'm not saying we don't need an economic development person, I'm not saying we don't need a community development person. But do we need two separate departments that have full staffs, or is there, is there truly a lot of common area where, oh, you know, we could, like I said, buy attrition? I'm not looking for mass layoffs. What we're, what's happening in the city is not going to be fixed in a day, it's not going to be fixed in a year, it's a long-term process. I think what we need to do is, as people start to retire and move to new employment opportunities, is really look at the structure. And we could say, okay, so this person leaves, oh, well, that job had a lot to do with economic development, but also had to do with community development. Could we combine that job together and bring in one person instead of bringing in two, two people? I think these are the types of conversations we need to have across all departments. Yes, our departments work fantastic together, and I think that's great, but does that mean we're duplicating efforts? I don't know, and I think that's something we should dive into and, and we should really look at.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, in response to the Inkling questionnaire, when asked if you support a municipally-funded warming station or shelter from November to April, you said that a seasonal shelter is necessary, but mentioned how last year it was difficult to find enough volunteers to run the warming station, leaving some employees burnt out. What can the city do to make sure that the warming station is adequately staffed?
So the good news is they have already started, and, uh, if you watched the five-hour meeting the other night, uh, you would hear from, um, from our public health department that they, that they have 19 candidates that they have interviewed, quality candidates, great candidates that are ready to do the job. And we are so lucky to, to have that different start right from this year. And like I mentioned earlier, uh, our community is fired up, and they want to make sure that they're there to do the work. United Way has a whole list of volunteers that have already raised their hand and say, you know what, I'm ready, let me volunteer. So I hope, I hope that we don't have the same issue that we did last year, and I think if we keep the conversation focused, um, on that, that it will, we won't see that problem this year.
Okay. Um, we're going to switch over to some audience submitted questions. Whoever, who wrote the rail question? Raise your hand, raise your hand. Who, who wrote about the rail? No one's going to volunteer? No one?
I read it.
Okay. Do you think the states and/or country will ever restore the trains and track to a point that it would be possible to transport from mass, basically rail in New Hampshire? Commuter rail, will it come here? What do you think? Mr. Guevara.
Will it come here? I don't know.
Do you support it?
Do I support it? From a citywide, the city taxpayers should pick up the complete dime? No, I don't.
Ms. Gregg.
Do I think it will ever come here? I think it's, I think it's a possibility. I think there are ways to do it where the city is not, um, covering the entire bill or taxpayers are covering the entire bill because certainly there are other parts of the state that will, uh, benefit from that. There are certainly other parts, even in Massachusetts, that are going to benefit from that as well. And I think it's a, a big, it's a very big financial thing that we need to talk about. There's a lot in this state that we have to talk about when it comes to financials, and there's just not a lot. But right now, I would say, under current, um, from our executive council to the governor's office, um, they have really put, um, kind of the nail in the coffin for right now. So we need a, a big change in leadership in this state and majorities to see any talk of it coming again.
Ms. Kelly.
So I very much support commuter rail. It is something that I think will be an economic driver for our city and something that's very popular, but unfortunately, it has ping-ponged back and forth between politicians for far
But unfortunately, it has ping-ponged back and forth between politicians for far too long, and things get a little bit farther, and then they get stopped, and then it gets further, and then it gets stopped. I am on the rail committee now, and we are the closest we've ever been. There was a lot of discussion around a stayover station and who would fund that. And actually, MBTA is in a position right now where they would put one which actually help us. So we are closer than we've ever been to be able to talk about this. It was never on the entire backs of the taxpayers, a portion of it. I believe maybe the station would be covered by the city, but all of the other upgrades, et cetera, we would be looking for federal dollars as well as a partnership with MBTA. But as somebody who, when I first moved to Nashua, this was a bedroom community for me. I basically went into Boston to big agency life every single day, and it was a four-hour bus ride. Two hours there, two hours back. And every single person on that bus would say to me, oh, yeah, right, we're gonna get commuter rail? We've been talking about it for 20 years, it's never gonna happen. But I'd really like to see it happen, because I think it's an important, not only for just being able to hop on the train and go to Boston. My son, Miles, is here, he loves trains, that would be great. But also, there's a lot from a business perspective, right? I had people who wanted to stay in Boston after they got out of school and commute up to me, and that wasn't possible. So I think that there's a lot of things that are intricately tied to commuter rail, but it is a really important piece of the overall, what do we wanna see in Nashua pie? With an eye to fiscal responsibility.
Ms. Morgan?
So we have to be ready for it. But the number-one thing that is funny to me, that MBTA has said this is their number-one priority for the next 10 years. So why not let them pay for it? They have even said that having a stop in Nashua would save them money in the long term on that return, because right now, all of the trains have to return back to the station. And so in the long run, it would even save them money. Now, that's talking about mass. One of the things that we hear often these days with our current governors, don't mass up New Hampshire. And so people are worried about that, about what would it mean to have a train here? Or all these people are gonna come in? Well, they'd be going to work, is what they would be doing. And we would be taking jobs there, they'd be bringing jobs up here. The tech hub in Manchester has said, in the next 10 years, they're going to have 400 jobs. And we don't have the workforce to fill that. We don't have the trained, educated, you know, college, recent college grads to be able to fill that. And so what the train would do is allow those grads or interns that are in and around Boston to be able to fill those job gaps in New Hampshire. And so if we want to continue to create a city, an estate, that our future generations can live and grow and thrive, we have to be ready for this opportunity. But it doesn't mean that we need to pay it. We need to look at, yeah, federal funding is great, but also private money could come in. I know that there's been conversations with many different developers talking about it. And maybe the time is right, maybe it's not. But we spend too much time on the studies. And by the time we finish this study, and a million or plus dollars on every study, it's rotten again, and we have to do it all over again. So less money on the studies, we have to be ready to move forward and make it happen.
Thank you. The last time we had commuter rail in Nashville was around in the 1960s. I've been here since the mid-'90s, and we are still talking about it today. Audience submitted a question. What are you going to do about the library related to the building? We're gonna go back again, Mr. Guevah.
Thank you. So, yeah, the library is a great asset to Nashua, and I've been very fortunate that they have involved me in their future planning. We've been part of the focus groups and seeing what we want done with the future of the library. And I look forward to staying in tune with that. I think we have a lot of great ideas. We're kind of going through a phase now where we're kind of calculating and getting designs back and going forward in that extent. So I absolutely am a supporter of the library. I look forward to seeing the designs of what we think we could do going forward. And we'll figure out the price and all that as it comes up.
Ms. Gregg?
Well, as somebody who's analog enough, where I love a book, I never got into the Kindle, I have to have a book. I think the library is such an important resource. And certainly here in Nashua, it's not just a place for books, it's a gathering place. It's a, you know, a place for people to come in and get warm. There's puzzles, there's, you know, kids playing, there's all kinds of different services. It's such a vital part of our community. It's actually one of the heartbeats of our community. So I'm very supportive in making sure that we are updating, doing what the building needs to invest in. Because really, anytime you invest in a library, you're investing in not only the future, but also in the past. And the past is really important, especially here in Nashua. I think we're pretty nostalgic here. But, you know, where we came from, where we're going, and it really, this is kind of the base of where all that happens. So very supportive of the library in looking more at the plans to see how we can take that next into the future, because we also have AI coming up. And so, you know, how do we make sure that we're staying on top of everything that's coming so that this can still be a place where we honor our past and look to the future?
Ms. Kelly?
I was a book nerd as a child. I would literally sit and read books instead of go and hang out with people. So the library is such an important part of the fabric of our community. I also participated in the conversations around what do we want the library to be? We've got some really interesting plans back. They also just opened up an RFP to look at a public-private partnership here on the river to get the library and other potential pieces out of it. So I'm very supportive of it. We need to have a building that just is as beautiful as our director and all the people who work here. They do such incredible work here. And it can really be the heart, and it can tie into the Riverwalk that was just done. So I really look forward to the next phase of the library.
Our library was voted number-one in the state. This library, the one that we're sitting in right now, and that's not by accident. That's because we have an incredible staff here that is dedicated, not just to providing you books, physical and audio, but they are absolutely astounding in the ways that they connect with our community. And they are fast. They move at the speed of our community, and what we need, they're able to do and pull together fast. It's really, they have a little seed library, so you can go and you can pick out seeds to plant. Or they have a useful things library. I haven't looked recently what's in it, but it's been like tools. Or, for example, instead of going and buying a new tool, you can come to the library, and you can look through it, and you can pick one out. So it's so much more than books. It is really a resource center and a community hub. I actually just renewed my library card right before we started this upstairs. They made it quick and easy. And I wish that they actually had merch. So to the friends of the library, who are some of the happiest volunteers I've ever met in my life, please make merch so we can buy it and support you in those future endeavors. I have specifics I would like, a bookbag, sweatshirt, coffee mug, maybe a bookmark would be great. But seriously, we have the number-one library, and we need to keep it that way. We should be proud of that.
Indeed. And the library is celebrating 54 years, as Director McCormick just told me. It's a great place, it's a great resources. I believe it's called the Library of Things, Director McCormick? Okay. Let's switch this up a little bit here. We'll take a pause from the audience. Question. Where did my question go? How do you lead in a divided room when both sides are motivated by compassion but disagree on approach? Ms. Kelly?
How do you lead in a divided room, right? Is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
I think you lead with honesty and integrity, and you spend time, you know, telling people what your perspective is, but not necessarily judging them for theirs. And that's how you get people to be able to open up and talk. And I would add to that, curiosity is really important, right? Okay, I'm not going to instantly villainize your opinion. I wanna know why you think that, and can you explain that to me? And then continue to add and question those things. So I think that's how you, oh, that's how you lead. We are sadly living in very divided times. But I think when you are part of a community and you can connect on a level that's human, that's how you can really bring people together and move forward.
Mr. Guevah?
Thank you. And it's a great question. I think how you lead is by open-mindedness. I think if you go into a negotiation with your mind made up, and you can't be swayed one way or another, you're doing a very big disservice to everybody here. We go in, and that's one thing I like about the Board of Aldermen, is we can go in and have a great conversation, and it can be passionate. And at the end of the day, we're gonna make a choice. But all 15 of us around the horseshoe, I think there's a very good understanding of, we all want what's best for Nashua, and we just have different ways of looking at how we get there. So with me, it's always been, I'm gonna come in open-minded. I have an idea of what I would like to see. I'm gonna fight for my position. But there's absolutely been times I've been swayed on that board to go one way or another. I've been for it. You bring up a very good point. Maybe we could find an amendment? I think it's, you have to be willing to work together. And I think everything we see up in Concord and what we see in DC is just wrong. It's people who don't wanna work together, and that's not a service for anybody.
Ms. Morgan?
I think the very first thing you do is you close your mouth and you open your ears. You have to listen. And you have to listen, not just to the words that are being said, but the words that aren't being said. You have to learn how to read between the lines. You have to find the common ground. You have to use phrases like, "tell me more." And you have to use phrases like "and" instead of "but," because sometimes, it's not black and white, sometimes the answer is both. And we have to figure out how to make that happen. And really just be a solution seeker instead of a problem pointer outer. That's a technical phrase. But really, it is. It's let's seek a solution. And maybe we both walk away and we don't feel like we won, because it's not a win-win. It should be three wins. You win, I win, and the community wins. And if you don't have that last piece, nobody won.
Ms. Gregg?
I think it's important, as somebody who's in leadership, to always check your bias at the door. And I agree that listening is the number-one thing we should do. When you become an elected official, you don't represent just the people who voted for you. You represent every single person in your district, and sometimes even beyond your district. So one thing that I've always pushed to do is have those uncomfortable conversations, listen to those. Because a lot of times, there's solution in that. At the State House, I actually co-founded a caucus that is built on the Braver Angels model, which is, you know, getting neighbors to talk again and stuff. But it was built on, outside of legislation, can we get along? And it was successful. I have a lot of friends there. I've been able to get, in a situation where I'm not in the majority, we've been able to get a lot of nonpartisan legislation through just by saying, you know what? Let's have a difficult conversation. I know you might have very different viewpoints with me, but I'm gonna sit down and I'm gonna listen. And I've always had those conversations with constituents here in the city that were, some of them were my biggest trolls online. Those are the ones that I say, okay, but what do you need? Every single person needs something, and every single person has valuable insight into a problem. So it's always about seeing people more than you see the problem. Because if you can put that aside, you will find a solution that you never would have thought of.
Okay, thank you. We've reached a midpoint here in our event, and this is where we are going to get a little personal. I'm gonna take a page out of our moderator from last week from the Board of Ed. I'm not gonna ask you about pizza.
Oh, but I was so ready for that question.
I know. But I am gonna ask you, I am gonna ask you, because I'm kind of gearing up on what my other questions are gonna be. Your favorite place in Nashua to get ice cream? Well, Andrew, we are not in the season of ice cream. And I was gonna break it down to two establishments, but I'm not gonna do that. But what is your favorite place in Nashua to get ice cream? Mr. Guevah?
Gotta be Hayward's, you know? Sometimes I feel like I have to remortgage my house to go there, but it's great.
Ms. Gregg?
Is there any other answer besides Hayward's? I'm not sure I've found it if it's right here in Nashua. And it's actually a walk from our house, so I can feel healthy about it, too. But they have this great crunch topping that I've only ever found where I grew up in southern Illinois. And so, I mean, that's just the only answer there is.
Ms. Kelly?
I feel lame saying Hayward's, but that's where you go. I've gone there before a Board of Aldermen meeting, gotten a whole ice cream, and like eaten it before going inside.
Ms. Morgan?
The question is, which Hayward's? Right? The drive-thru or the original? And when Hayward's is closed, where do you go? And for me, that's a specific brand of ice cream called Alex. It is absolutely delicious. I've tried every single flavor. I have a pint-a-week problem.
Okay. Well, shout-outs to Hayward's and shout-outs to the other, all the ice cream establishments, but the big one, Brew, and all of those. I had a question from the audience, and I was trying to do research. Do you think we are bonding too much? And for the folks at home in the audience, bonding means borrowing. Do you think we are bonding too much in the city? Unfortunately, do not have the amounts. Just trying to look that up, I couldn't find it. Mr. Guevah?
Yeah, I absolutely do think we bond too much. And I think what we need to look at here is, in Nashua, what I've noticed in my four years is everything's a fire drill, everything needs to happen today. And like I was talking about earlier in the program, with long-term planning, I feel we could relieve a lot of these bonding issues. We know when a roof's gonna go. We know when we're gonna have to make some of these capital expenditures. And if we budget properly, I absolutely think we could relieve some of the bonding, which will ferry up some of the money inside the budget.
Ms. Gregg?
Well, I think that's a complicated question, because with bonding, we actually get lower rates on certain things. So it's kind of like the first time you ever, when you have your credit cards, you don't wanna get rid of your credit card that you've had the longest, because then it actually brings up your credit score and stuff. So I think that the lack of funding that we have in this city, based on the very minimal budget that we have, and what the city has been able to do as far as bonding and keeping our rates incredibly low on that bonding, a lot lower than other cities. I'm not sure that we're necessarily bonding too much. I see a lot of fiscal responsibility in it. I think, unfortunately, cities have some very, very high costs. I'm always open to looking and saying, can we adjust things? I do think, in a city that is as old as ours, we have a big problem with infrastructure. It's, you know, worn down. We have, you know, one of the oldest cities in the nation. That's amazing, but it also comes with some heavy responsibilities. And, you know, making sure that we're keeping up on all of that. So I do, I have seen discussions between the mayor, between the Board of Aldermen. I think there are some heavy discussions about what we should bond and what we shouldn't. And overall, I think they're doing a good job. Of course, there's always places where anybody that's ever had to like coupon at the grocery store, or you understand, like, there's probably certain areas that we can cut. But I wouldn't necessarily go as far to say we're bonding too much, because I do see the incredible rating that we have and how that actually saves us money in a lot of areas.
Ms. Kelly?
I think we are bonding at an appropriate level, and that's because I listened to our CFO, who looks at that and tells us what we should be bonding, what we shouldn't, certain things that we can bond and what we can't bond. And when you look at bonding, not only do we have a great rating because we've done such a good job of planning, it also allows us to keep the tax rate from going up and down and up and down. If we paid cash every time we needed a fire truck, the taxes would go up dramatically that year. And then we'd have to fix it the next year. So bonding is a tool in the tool belt when we look at budgeting, to allow us to do some of those bigger infrastructure projects that come up, new schools, whatever it is, and make that more of an even effect on our tax rate.
Ms. Morgan?
And just to echo my colleagues here, it is a tool. And we have to rely on the incredible staff that we have at City Hall to decide, is it the right tool? I think that the question, intent of the question, are we bonding too much, could be re-asked back to that listening thing. And what people are saying versus not saying is, are we bonding the right things? Are we bonding the right things? So that could be, that could be the question, right? But we do have to bond, we do have to keep up our credit rating. And we do need to make sure that we have that tool should any crisis occur, and we need to have it. We need to make sure that we have low interest rates on that bond. But I think the question is, are we bonding the right things?
Okay. Audience submitted a question. What would you do to save on legal costs for lawsuits concerning the right to no request? Ms. Morgan?
Ooh, that's a doozy. So we spend a lot of money in outside legal. And when the Board of Aldermen was asked to find some spending to cut from the budget, actually, a part of it was taken out of outside consulting fees, outside legal fees. And we do have a lot of money that we're spending right now on legal. But what do you do to reduce the right to no requests? Well, you open transparency. You start the conversation, you allow the conversation, you invite the conversation into your door. You don't lock doors and put in restraining orders and keep people out. But you have a sit-down conversation, like we're doing right now, and you say, look, you're costing us a lot of money, and I know that's not your real intent, because you do care about Nashua, and you care about the citizens, and you care about transparency. What can we do? How can we work together to make sure that we are able to keep our property taxes low? And it's really just communication and being willing to listen and willing to be wrong, really. And also to be willing to say, hey, we made a mistake, sorry, can we move forward together?
Ms. Kelly?
I think that the right to know is very bureaucratic, right? It's how we do things, and we gotta put things in an appropriate way. And the way that I lead and the way that I have been as an Alderman is like, how do we come up with a solution that maybe isn't, you know, a 10-page right to know? What do you need? What do you need? Is there something that you're looking for? Can I find that for you? Great. Does it need to go through all those levels and all of that combativeness for you to get it? I don't think so. So I think that's one piece. And I do think, you know, it's been said that, you know, our city committees have duplication, or our city departments have duplication. Our legal department is tiny for a city as big as we are. We have four, I believe, lawyers. So could we look at having an additional on-staff lawyer to help with the burden of outside costs?
Ms. Gregg?
So I think that this, and I know that this is not unique to Nashua. It feels like it, because we see a concentration of it here. But we have had legislation even at the State House, because a lot of cities are dealing with this right to know. And I think, you know, what this boils down to really is that communications piece and investing in communication, how we're communicating with people. If somebody feels the need to sue the city because they're not getting what they need, we need to sit down and have that conversation. I think we're missing that. It's back to what I talked about before, when you're talking to someone. It's back to what I talked about before when you're talking to somebody who disagrees with you. There is something there and we have to be able to have those conversations. I think too often we want to say, oh, that person's just causing trouble or, you know, there's nothing there. But there's something there. They're looking for something. So let's understand more about what, and you know, it's a lot of what my colleagues have said, but let's, let's look at what's happening there because obviously there's something. And we do want to save taxpayers' money. I mean, we're talking, you know, many, many zeros now of, of money that is costing the taxpayers. But I think we could head some of that off by, by communicating better. I think some, some of it's hard because we don't have a newspaper anymore. When we had the possible asphalt plant happening, nobody knew, the whole neighborhood, nobody knew about this asphalt plant that it could be coming. And had Joanne St. John not told me, I wouldn't have known. So, you know, there, there are communication pieces that we're missing. And I think as a city, if we invest more in communication, we're going to see some of this right to know back off. But also we need elected officials who are willing to sit down and have hard conversations and say, you know, what is it that you're missing and how can we fix this for you?
Mr. Guevara.
Thank you. This is a great question and it's something that's costing the city a lot of money. And this is a funny analogy I'm going to say, but I truly believe every problem can be solved over a cup of coffee. The joke there is I don't drink coffee, maybe a cup of hot chocolate. But everything can be solved with a conversation. And I think what happened here and what happens in Nashua, and what happens everywhere is you start getting egos in the way. And it starts, we're going to dig our heels and I'm not giving you information. I'm giving you information. And that's not productive for anybody. I work in an organization where we file right to no requests against municipalities all across the, in New Hampshire, very frequently. A lot of the times we get the information like that, not a problem. Other times, we end up having to do litigation over it. It, it's the nature of the beast. I just feel that people need to take a deep breath. We are public government. Our job is to be open, honest and transparent. If you have a question, come to me and ask and we should be able to get that done without filing a piece of paperwork, waiting five to seven days, getting, getting an extension filed and so on and so on. Don't get me wrong, I think there's times where you probably need an extension. Some right to know requests are very lengthy and do take that time. I do not envy Gary, our right to know coordinator in the city. That guy has a very rough job balancing a bunch of right to knows. And that's how big it is, is we have a position in the city that handles these right to know requests. And that's his full-time job is just making sure that Nashua is open and honest. And that's at times, I think, where we go wrong because we still have issues with right to know and we are paying somebody. And I think we could just need to be open, honest and transparent. And I think we need to check egos aside when it comes to public, public transparency. And I think that can absolutely be done.
On the matter and subject of communication, how would you improve communication and participation so that the electorate residents or citizens that live here are engaged? Obviously, the right to know is a mechanism, but how do we solve that? Ms. Morgan.
I wanted to quickly correct one of my colleagues that we don't have a newspaper. We don't have a physical newspaper that's printed every day. However, shout out and thank you to the Nashua Inklink for hosting us today. And if you want to start your day, you can sign up for their free newsletter and they have no paywall. So their news is free and you will get it every single morning in your news box. That's how I start my day. Thank you so much. And the question of how do we stay engaged? It's actually that, right? It's signing up for that free newspaper and getting that information directly. It is raising your hand and saying, you know what? Volunteer for a position. Stay engaged. Get outside of your door. Get off your couch. Say hi. Say hi to your neighbors. Be involved. You can come to any of the Board of Aldermen meetings or any, most, if not all, of the committee meetings also. No one's hiding anything. You can look right on the front page of the city website. The whole calendar is there of all of the upcoming meetings. And if you have a question, you just got to ask. Or you raise your hand and you say, hey, I'm really interested in X, Y or Z. How do I find out more about that? The Aldermen are happy to tell you, happy to engage you, happy to pull you in. And in, all of our nonprofits are happy to have volunteers. So there's, there's 100 different paths to engagement here in our city. And if you're not engaged, you're not really trying is my thought.
Ms. Kelly.
Thank you. I think it is incumbent upon us as leaders in the community to be out talking to people, telling people what's going on, asking them what they think. Door knocking is one of my favorite things to do when I'm campaigning, but we should be out there, not when we're campaigning, right? You get real conversations with people about what matters to them and you can tell them what's going on in the city. I think that is a critical piece as 15 of us can go out into the community and say, hey, this is what's happening. Or tailor it to whatever you're really interested in. I also was going to say the newspaper, I think the newspapers are so important. I went to school for journalism. And, you know, I think that we've, we've heard from so many people that losing a local paper has been so hard for them, even especially when it comes to going on to vote. I don't know who to vote for. I don't have the paper. I didn't, you know, I didn't know who was even running. So I think that that is a piece that could be really important. So yeah, I think those, those two pieces would be, we, are incumbent upon us to make sure we're out there engaging and making sure that people know what's happening because there's a lot happening. It's a lot. I don't even know half of it.
Ms. Gregg.
I think part of it is, you know, investing in improving the city website. So we're talking a lot about going to the city website or doing this. Sometimes the city website can really be behind and, and that's an investment that I think. There are a lot of different areas that we're doing a little bit of, but not really a lot of. And I think there's Aldermen here in the room right now that have weekly emails and stuff that, you know, that they, they send out this information. But then we have things like this five-hour meeting the other night and not everybody can get online and see that. So is there some way to summarize these meetings and tell people what's going on? I think that we haven't looked enough about effective ways of communication. And yes, we do have the Inklink, but not everybody's online. We still have people that are analog like me that like to have something in paper and, and see that. Or we have people maybe that are watching our public television or listening to the radio. We have WSMN here that does a lot of different radio shows. So we have to look, it's a multi-layer process on how we effectively communicate to people because just one way is not going to work. And just telling people, you know what? It's your responsibility to figure this out. Well, let's make sure that we at least have access to these different things so that we can get it to them. Because it's, it's a, it is complicated like, you know, everything else, but a lot of people have phones. Is there a text push that we can do in the city? You know, are, are there other pieces that we can have about this? If there's something important like meetings where we're talking about an asphalt plant in a neighborhood, is there a better way to communicate that than just putting it on the city website? When we still do have a lot of people that are not necessarily there. So, you know, there could be something that maybe there's a podcast now with Board of Aldermen meetings. After they have these big meetings, we have some Aldermen that come in and talk about this for people and make it in simpler terms. And I know after you've had a five and a half hour meeting, you don't want to think about that. But all of that, all of that helps us in the long run because the more people understand, the less misinformation we have and the better conversations we can have. Oh, I got the red, sorry.
Thank you. I, I think the, the main key to this is we talk, 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 talk. And I think we were just having this conversation before with some of my colleagues. During COVID, we all kind of were shut in. We, a lot of us stopped talking. We stopped going out. That needs to change back. We need to start re-energizing. We need to start having respectful, good dialogue with everybody. It is perfectly fine to disagree upon issues, but at the end of the day, it's talking. It's getting people engaged. It's not shutting them down and making them feel like they're a terrible person because they disagree with you. That's everything wrong with politics. That's, that's Washington DC stuff. That's not how it should be handled at a local level. It's not how it should be handled there either. What, what it comes down to is treating everybody as an individual. We can have our differences, but we need to get back to talking to everybody. And we need to get out, we need to get out from behind our keyboards and type in on Facebook and just have these one-on-one face-to-face conversations.
Over cocoa, right?
Perfectly fine with that, absolutely.
Fantastic. Meetings that extend past midnight often strain both officials and the public. Should the board adjust how it schedules and manages controversial items? I want to go with Ms. Kelly first.
Of course me.
Actually, we're going to start with the standing folks that are currently and then we'll go with the folks that are.
Sure. So that's a tough one because I'm not a night owl and I, I do, like, it's exhausting when you get towards the end of the night. But you also get energized in a meeting like that, right? My husband can attest that when I get home, it takes me about an hour to come down from our meetings. So sometimes actually the other night, 1:00 AM, I woke him up. I was like, I got to tell you about the meeting. I got to tell you about the meeting. And he was not pleased. But I, I, what I struggle with with this is that I, I never want to cut down, shut down public comment. And that is one of the things we've looked at is like, do we, you know, limit how much public comment that we have so that we can get to the business of our meetings? We did put a, a limit on how long people could speak. And that was, you know, one of the, the compromises that we came to so that people have to come a bit prepared so they can say what they need to say. But I, I struggle with the idea of just saying, oh, we, we're going to stop. There's also momentum that happens when you're having a meeting and you're getting this information. If we stop and then start again, I think that that, that could lose some of that momentum. So while I don't love being at City Hall at 1:00 AM, I think the current process works really well. And I think it's important for us, if people are willing to come out and talk to us for that long about something they're passionate about, then we should be there listening.
Mr. Guevara.
Yeah, and I agree with a lot of what was said. I think the process we have right now works. We start our meetings at 7:30 so anybody who works that nine to five can come down and have their, have their time in public comment. And I think that's the most important part of what we do as Aldermen in these meetings is everybody's public comment period. Yeah, some of these meetings go late and we just had one. And I'm the same way. We, I walk out of that meeting and it's a good hour, hour and a half before I can actually think about falling asleep. And I, I think we're hitting the nail on the head with saying, well, we have good momentum. We, we had, to go back to our meeting we just had on Tuesday night, that was a pretty light agenda. These were really the only big pieces of legislation we were debating. And in there is we started gaining momentum. There, there was motions to re-refer it back to a committee, which would have pushed it to another night. And, and a majority of the board said, no, this is, we're here. We have the stakeholders here. I think we can iron it out. And I think with the amendments we had there, it was, we're like on that one yard line. Let's just get it through one yard and score the touchdown. So I, I do feel it, it could be very counterproductive at times, the cutoff meeting, especially at timestamps, because you could be in the middle of a very important conversation and you're, you're, you're just about to close that deal. And then you, you're kind of stopping, stopping that good dialogue. So I wouldn't be in favor of changing anything. I understand there's some late nights, but that's, that's what we signed up for. And I, I feel, I feel it's the correct way to get business done.
Ms. Gregg.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've watched a lot of the meetings and if I haven't been watching online, I've been there and as uncomfortable as those benches are, I, I do think that they handle responsibly. I think that the scheduling as well. I think it's important, not only that the people that are there get to have their moment to talk because they, you know, came for whatever reason that they feel passionate about, but also that the elected officials around the horseshoe have their time to talk too because it's not just about them talking. They're there representing all of their constituents. So sometimes it's going to go late. We have that at the State House too. Sometimes we're going to be in there. It's just part of the gig and I think it's fine. I mean, that's, we're all willing to serve people and sometimes it takes a little longer than others.
Ms. Morgan.
Yeah, nothing really substantial to add to that. This is what, this is what we came here to do. This is what we came here to serve. But I would be remiss if I didn't share a, a question I've gotten actually often by some constituents. And I was asked again last night after watching that, that five-hour meeting. Ashley said to me, you know what's interesting is that our public has a time limit that they can speak, but our representatives don't. And I thought that was an interesting question. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but it does force you to be concise as we are expecting of, of our constituents. We might want to think about doing that ourselves.
Follow-up question to all of you. Would you consider shifting the start of the meeting to 6:30 or 6 o'clock?
No.
Ms. Morgan. Ms. Morgan.
Sorry, sorry. You said you started with the elected.
And I went the Ms. Guevara way.
As much as I would love to have like a noon. Yeah, that would be great. We'd all be home at latest to sit down and have dinner. But the, the 7:30 works, right? The 7:30 works because it does give people the opportunity to get home from work, whether they, they live here, assuming they work a nine to five or are commuting. It gives the representatives the chance to have dinner with, with their families or finish their own work because everybody has a job. And also to have the meeting. While I don't like the 7:30 start time, I think it's pretty effective.
Ms. Kelly, your turn.
Already answered, but yeah, I, I think the 7:30 works. And actually, legislation was put in to move it earlier and it failed because we have built the way that we are able to serve in Nashua around that. And it is very doable to have a full-time job or run out your own business, as many people at this table, and still be a public servant because the, they are in the evenings and I can still pick up my kids and get them to dance and have dinner and then get to a meeting. So I think that the, the way we have it now makes a whole lot of sense.
Ms. Gregg.
I agree. I mean, this is a huge discussion here just because this, I believe this works. There, the way that our government is set up in New Hampshire, we have a lot of elected officials. And I think it's like probably a very minute percentage of a percentage point that actually make a livable wage. So people are working. They have other things that they're doing in the world before they have to go in and serve. And I think it's, it's actually a great time. We can, even though it does get dark really early now, but, you know, the, the work of the day is done in that family and then we have time to just dedicate to that and people can be present.
Ms. Guevara.
Thank you. No, what we have works right now. It's good for, it's a good time. I feel we get more people coming to a 7:30 meeting than we would if we were to move it to six. It allows you to have that little bit of buffer time between getting out of work and getting to a meeting. And I think it encourages a little bit more public input. So I'm in favor with keeping it at 7:30.
To each of you, would you consider some sort of code of conduct to limit Alderman remarks to a specific time because y'all talk too much? Ms. Gregg.
Well, I might talk a lot. I, I think no, for a state, for a reason that I already stated. When we have people come in that are representing, you know, themselves in their own neighborhood, they have a limited amount of time. But the elected officials are actually there representing thousands of people. So they do have a little bit longer. They have that leeway and sometimes it's very important. And also these are discussions. A lot of times you're seeing the discussion happening. So, you know, one person might say one thing and then you've thought of another thing because it brings it up. And that's actually what we're elected to do, to represent the people and have these conversations to find the best solutions. And I think saying, you know what? We're going to limit you at like five minutes. You're going to miss a lot of opportunity to find some solutions.
Ms. Morgan.
I disagree. I think that, I think that we can get a lot said in five minutes. Maybe it's not three minutes. Maybe it's not exactly the same, but the, but the five minutes, you're still able to have a conversation. What it means is you're being more concise, you're being more precise with your words. We're not talking about our weekend plans, not that the two, two sitting Aldermen up here do. But it means you're not on a soapbox. It means you're here to say what you got to say and move on.
Ms. Kelly.
I absolutely think that the Aldermen need to have the ability to discuss the matter at hand. It's our meeting to hear from the public, look at what's there. We come in having done our homework, but to, you know, previous comments, when you're in that discussion, things come up. You know, questions come up and we have to be able to do that work. While sometimes people are repetitive in their comments, I think that's part of the gig as well. We're there, we have to do all of our discussions in front of you guys on TV so you know exactly what's being talked about. That's part of the transparency of it. And so when we're in those discussions till one in the morning, that's because we are having those conversations right out, right out in the open so that we can make those decisions. And as an Alderman who's sat in that chamber for eight years, if I had to think about how long I could speak in order to get my point across, now I'm a shorter, I'm pretty short and concise when I go talk, but I, I think that would be undue stress when we're really just trying to get the work of the city done.
Ms. Guevara.
Thank you. During Aldermanic comment, I think, yeah, I'm fine with having a three-minute limit. That matches up with the public comment to the public. I think that would be, be very productive. During debate and regular business of these meetings? No, I, I don't. I don't think you can put a, a time limit on getting the work done. And I, I, I feel we'd be doing a disservice to the public if I had a really good point to bring up, but up my five minutes are up. So now what do I do? I, I think it, it could really stop some good, healthy debate. And as somebody who's sat in the chamber for four years, yeah, you absolutely have thoughts that come to your mind. You might give your initial, your initial spiel and then you're sitting there for a few minutes. Oh, what, what about this? And then you're asking a question. That stems off onto another debate. So our, our job is to kind of vet these things thoroughly. I don't think we should put a time restraint on how, how long we can do that for.
Who would you hold accountable if progress stalls? Ms. Kelly.
Who, what was the question? Who, what was the question?
Who do you hold accountable if progress stalls?
Progress, that's such a, that's a very big concept.
Let's just say you've got something you guys have been working on, and, you know, a few months down the line, six months down the line, it doesn't work out.
I think there's accountability for a lot of people, right? So if we as aldermen are sitting there and something hasn't come back to our desk, it's on us to ask why, you know, why it's still on the table, or what's happening during our homework especially. But I also think it's just as important for the public to keep us accountable. If there's something that you're unsure about, or thought, wow, why hasn't this been fixed, call us out on it, ask us where it is. Because it may not be that, you know, we're just letting it sit over there, because, you know, we're being lazy, it might be because there's 20 other things over here. The city is vast. The amount of work that happens in the city every day blows my mind. It's one of my favorite things about being alderman, seeing how intricate our departments are, how well they work together, and there's so many things going on. So ultimately, if progress has stalled, I like to think of it as not necessarily there's anything nefarious going on, but that, you know, there's probably 20 other things over here that we're trying to, you know, to block and tackle.
Ms. Morgan?
So I actually had this question yesterday, when I was meeting with some neighbors, talking about the tannery that is going to actually break ground next month. And they said, if the developer doesn't do what they said they were going to do, who holds them accountable? And the simple answer is us, we do. However, we don't, as at-large, we don't live in every single neighborhood, we don't see every single project, and so we ask, we ask for help. We ask you to hold us accountable, and to hold our feet to the fire, and let us know when you're not seeing that progress that should be happening, or the developer not making the promises that they said. So the short answer is, we do.
Mr. Goveya?
Thank you. And I think the short answer here is, if progress stalls, we all fail, from the mayor down. We are a team at City Hall, yeah, we're the Board of Aldermen, we're the Board of Directors, for lack of better terms. Our job's to make sure everybody's held accountable. We're elected into this position so we can go up to a director and say, what's happening? Why aren't you doing your job? What's wrong here? We can't, the only people who can fire us is you, that's it. Our job is to hold these people accountable, and if we stop progress, and you guys don't like it, well, that's our job to hold them accountable. We all fail as a city if we stop becoming productive. So in my opinion, it's a everybody problem at the city.
Ms. Gregg?
Well, I think the first person I would look at, because progress, that's a, I mean, it could be progress on any number of things, it could be a small thing. I think the first place I'm gonna look is always gonna be in the mirror. Is there anything that I did that either stopped conversations, or that maybe we didn't look at enough, I didn't ask enough questions? And then from that, I'm gonna look at what progress exactly was stalled, and I think we should be looking at postmortems. Like whenever we've had either a success or a failure, we should be, you know, having, meeting together and saying, okay, what went right, what went wrong, and how can we build off of that? Because progress stopping is not always a bad thing. You know, sometimes that's a good thing, to stop, reset, look and say, maybe it wasn't the right thing, maybe we were headed down the wrong path. So part of that communication is that postmortem in saying, this is where we went right, this is where we went wrong, and this is how we move from here, and being open with the public about that. This is why, you know, this stalled, or this is why this didn't work. I think that would save us a lot of headaches.
This is a question from the audience. Budget is too high, what would you cut? Ms. Morgan, you're up.
That's a great and loaded question.
Listen, for the record, it was me.
There's probably a lot of little things. But something that came up in the Board of Education, and that has come up in this conversation already, Shoshana's looking through to tell you exactly what she's gonna cut. It's highlighted, I can see it. But it is, really, we gotta look at maybe some different solutions, specifically with our bus contract. It went up $1.8 million this year. And when I say bus contract, that is for students, that's getting our kids to and from school, whether it is the commitment to get them to the charter school that they elected to go to, or it is to our public schools. And we only had one bid on that contract. That's a problem. Why didn't we have a competitive bid for that? And so that, as aldermen sitting in the audience, Rick Dowd said, in order to actually move the tax, the tax percentage at all, you need to find $2 million in the budget to make a move. Well, that's 1.8 right there.
Ms. Kelly?
You're going in order now, okay. It's a really good question, and as someone who's stood on the Budget Committee for eight years, it's a question I get a lot. As I talked about earlier, by the time the budget gets to us, it's got a lot that is already built into it. So there are very small places that we can make a huge, especially where, to the point of the tax rate, $2 million is what we have to cut in order to make any sort of shift in that. It's a lot of little stuff. I mean, we're literally looking at, okay, well, your paper went up, how come? How come software went up this year? Can we negotiate that down? And all that little stuff can add up. But unless constituents come to me and say they want, you know, fewer firefighters, or, you know, fewer police officers, or, gosh, we don't need all those teachers, the bulk of this budget is people who work in our city, and the things that are on top of that are not these like cherry-picked little pet projects. It is a small, small percentage. So I think when you talk about cutting, a lot of the department heads have already done a lot of that work by the time they come to us. Like, oh, we level-funded this because of why, but we're always looking at it line by line.
Ms. Gregg?
I think we have to look at the procurement, and kind of how we look at studies and fun things. I think one of the things that I struggle with is the cost of all the different studies, and maybe it never happens, like, we're talking millions on studies. You know, $750,000 just to look at, you know, and that's a low number, what we're gonna do with the KEF and stuff. Is there a way that we can streamline some of these things, and not spend so much money looking at possibilities? You know, we're at a time where, I think the city, you know, the budget is very, very tight. And I often say that it's like Bob Cratchit, you know, cutting peas, you know, for a full dinner. There are so many things that we do really, really well on, but when I continue to hear things about these studies that are just astronomical, I wonder why we're investing so much in that. While I understand there is an important piece of it, is there any way that we can dial that back a little bit?
Mr. Goveya?
Thank you. Sitting on the Finance Committee for the city, so any big purchase that comes through, comes through us. I've always found my, one of the biggest jobs I have on the Board of Aldermen is to prioritize spending on capital, capital improvement projects, what'll that be? Something that affects your day-to-day life. And it's to absolutely 100% obsess over the spending of the city. As a member of the Finance Committee, we go through a record of expenditures that has every transaction the city's made. We meet every two weeks, we have to sign off on it, we have to vote on it. It's always going through these, it's figuring out, it's asking questions. I ask questions about the record of expenditures, of small expenses all the time. And you know what? Nine out of 10 times, no issue with them. But it's just the checks and balances of making sure we're not spending over what we should be. And like I said before, with me, it's the attrition. It's the attrition and reorganization is how I feel we could save some money. That's not gonna lower your taxes in one year, but I do feel over time, it could get us to a much better base.
Okay. I have another audience, this is from the audience, I did not write this question. Can you say one nice thing about each of your opponents? Ms. Morgan, go ahead.
I'm so excited I get to go first, can I do one on all three?
Absolutely.
So I'll start, I'll start here. So Shoshana is one of the fiercest fighters for our constituents that you will meet. She is passionate, she is kind, she is caring, and also really creative and fun. She makes mugs sometimes, or pins, or really fun things, and is a dance mom, which, I don't know how you do that, but you do. I got two minutes, so I'm gonna use it all up. And she has two kids, and one of my favorite things, and one of the reasons why I wanted to run for alderman at large, was she had, Miles, she called in from the hospital, from the hospital bed, to call into the meeting. Like, that's service. Alicia is just as fierce in the State House, and is unbelievable when it comes to standing up for what is right, not what is popular, not what is easy, and will go above and beyond to be the first person that calls and says, hey, friend, exact phrase, I haven't heard from you in a few days, are you okay? Or as we started this, I have 52 seconds, great. So as we started this was with the passing of Gloria. And Alicia and I spoke earlier today, and she said, you know, I called her, and I said, what do you need? And those aren't just things that she says, like, here, for you all to hear, she means it. And so she'll call you, and she'll say, what do you need? And Tyler and I, we don't know each other too well, but he has, his wife is here, and anytime he talks about her, he blushes a little bit, and is very proud of the work that she did here in this city, and also doesn't speak unless he has something of value to add. And I got 14, okay. I don't know, I disagree, I don't like the fact that you don't drink coffee, but that's okay, I'll forgive you, and we could do tea or cocoa anytime.
Mr. Goveya?
Thank you. I think everybody up here has Nashua in the first in front of their mind. And once again, it's how we see and how we get to these solutions is what's different. And I'll start right here with my colleague who I've worked up in the State House with, on many pieces of firefighter legislation, a fierce advocate for our first responders. I've called her up on, I believe, two or three pieces of legislation, and without hesitation, was always willing to put her name on it, always willing to go to bat for our firefighters. I respect that, absolutely. Shoshana, you've been in the chamber double the amount of time I have, nobody is more passionate on the issues you care about than you. We might not agree, that's perfectly fine. Anybody who's as passionate as you are, and is willing to go to bat and do the research, you have my respect any day of the week. And Amber, anybody who wants to have a business downtown has a work ethic of somebody incredible. The amount of work that you've put into both of your businesses is admirable, and it's awesome. And it's exactly the energy that the downtown business community needs, and it's a great asset to the city in its whole.
Fun fact, we did Tyler's wedding, and Alicia's.
This is how the order, hold on, Ms. Kelly?
Oh, you're skipping the order again.
Sorry, yeah, I'm trying to change it up a little bit, and I got some...
You're just keeping me on my toes, it's fine, I'm used to it. Okay, so I'll start with Amber. It's been incredible working with these two women, and getting to know them so closely. Amber, what I love about Amber is her deep love for our downtown, and she's such an incredible light in terms of what we want to see in the city. I talk about this all the time. We need some people to come in, she bought a legacy brand and reinvigorated it for, you know, a new age, and I thought that was really powerful. I got to work on the logo for her new website, or her new brand, but it was just great. And coal, and coffee and kindness, just wanting to, you're so passionate about the downtown area and the West Pearl area, and I think that's been so infectious. She also loves dogs, and it's so cute. Alicia has, if we're talking about service to the community, with The Greg Show, constantly keeping people informed, so emotionally intelligent, I've just been so grateful to collaborate and get to know her more. You know, State House work has been incredible, but we didn't know each other as closely as we have been able to do in the last couple of months. And I would say, with Tyler, I think the same thing, that ability to, we may not always see eye to eye, but he's come to me and said, hey, I'm thinking about this piece of legislation, would you be willing to co-sponsor it? And, you know, oftentimes, we're able to say, hey, we don't agree, but we agree on a lot, because we both really love the city.
Ms. Gregg?
I'll start with Tyler. I always say that sometimes our heroes need heroes, and I have watched Tyler be that for our first responders, and I so appreciate that. At the State House, he's come up with great legislation and pushed for that in difficult conversations, which has been awesome. I also can't ignore the fact of his age. He is an age where a lot of people don't want to get involved right now, they want to do the ostrich move, where they just want to ignore it, they want to, you know, go on TikTok or do whatever, and not pay attention to all this serious stuff that really we're just supposed to start when we start getting gray hairs. That dedication at that age is huge, I mean, it really is huge, and I love the passion that he has for that. Speaking of passion, Shoshana, she is passionate about everything she puts her mind to, and it is, it's incredible to watch. She is fierce, she's, you know, I think the definition of a boss lady. But also, underneath that exterior where she's, you know, very determined, everything else, she's this really great person, that when you stop and you get to know her, and she starts talking about her kids, or she starts talking about this city, or what she's done, it's hard not to want to be around her more and watch her work. And now Amber, who I probably know the best of anybody on this panel, she and I have been friends for years, and if you want to know anything about a nonprofit, you're gonna ask her, because she is all about always rolling up her sleeves and getting involved. She doesn't, I don't think she knows how to not get involved, when things that she feels passionate about. And if she doesn't know about something, she's going to find it. And she is also a person that calls and says, what's going on, are you okay? If she knows there's been something hard happening, she'll wait a couple days and then reach out, or even send flowers, when my husband has an imaginary birthday for me on Facebook, I get flowers. So all of these people, I am incredibly blessed to be on this panel with them.
Ronnie, can I say you have to ask that question at every, moving forward? That was a delight.
Whoever, who, raise your hand, who asked that question?
Aw, Maddie!
That's great!
Of course, of course. All right. We have covered a wide range of topics tonight, from city budgets to compassion and policymaking. In your closing statements, please tell voters what kind of partner you intend to be for national residents, if elected, and what will guide your decision-making when difficult issues arise. We're gonna go this way, Mr. Goveya?
Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody, for attending tonight, thank you for everybody who made this possible. This is the most important part of democracy, conversation. I've said it a bunch tonight, having the tough conversations. In the last four years in the chamber, it's been an absolute honor to be able to represent Ward One, and to do their bidding down in the Aldermatic Chamber. And what you'll get out of me is continued public service. I'm gonna listen to you. Sometimes we might agree, sometimes we might not, we might not, but you're gonna get a response. And that's something I've always prided myself on, is that you're gonna get a response. You call me, you're getting a call back, you text me, you're getting a text, email, you're getting an email back. Keeping that all in order sometimes might take a day or two, but I'll get there, I promise. What I want to deliver is to continue doing what I've done, and that's to be open, honest, bringing everybody to the table, solving complex problems, rolling up the sleeves, and getting it done. On Tuesday, this is kind of a fun race, you know, you get to pick three out of the four, you're gonna love that first one, you're gonna like that second person, you're gonna tolerate the third person. I'm just hoping I can make the person you tolerate. I'm Tyler Goveya, I ask for your vote on November 4th, and we'll see you at the polls.
Ms. Gregg?
First of all, I want to say I hope that everybody watching, listening, and everything else votes. The most important thing you can do is have your voice and have that count, and how you do that is by voting. And so no matter who you vote for, I just hope that you vote. And that's always my baseline for every piece of service that I do for Nashua. It's not a secret that we're already in difficult times, just stepping up to the plate and saying you want to run for office, is stepping up and saying, I'm ready to go, you know, into the difficult times for you. And that's when I decided to enter into politics, it's never been about the actual politics, it's always been about the people. That's something the Gregg family has a proud tradition of in this state, and especially in this city. And I, it is such a sense of pride to be able to carry that on, because it's always been about the people for that family, and for myself as well. So listening to people, every person, by the way, no matter what you think, no matter if we voted completely different on everything else, you have value to me, your opinion has value to me, and the solution that we all desire is somewhere in all of these different opinions. I believe in people. As a victim's advocate, I believe that every voice is important, especially, believe it or not, the ones that disagree with me, because just like when you're coaching a game, when you lose, you learn more. When you disagree with me, I learn more, and I figure out more and more how we can bring Nashua back. I do think that we are at a point of struggle right now, I think we have a lot of hard-working people. And I think we also are a city that has a great sense of nostalgia, so I want to take that nostalgia and build on that, and have the next Renaissance for Nashua with all of you, whether it's in office or not.
Ms. Kelly?
What you'll get is exactly what you see, somebody who's extremely passionate, who's showed up in Nashua for eight years, because I just love the work that I get to do every I just love the work that I get to do every single day in that chamber. And that's not going to change. I love the people that we work with, I love the city committees. Everything that we do is so powerful and it affects your lives every single day. And that's why I'm asking to keep doing it because I'm a total geek. I love it, love, I brought my budget book to this meeting, like, come on, I'm a total geek at this point. And then you asked what will guide? And I think that answer is you. You know, from, from a perspective of being in this community, I've lived here longer than I lived where I grew up now, 20 years. I want to hear what this city wants and I want to make sure that everybody's voice is heard in that chamber. So that will always be the guiding light for me, along with heart, because that's something that I can't ever put down. I will disagree with my colleague about your votes. I really hope you love all three people you vote for. Because I ran for office because I didn't love the leaders that were leading at the, at the national level, whatever, I didn't love what they stood for. So I hope that you are able to pick people that you do love and that will continue to show up for you every day.
Ms. Morgan.
I don't envy you. You have a very hard choice. These are, there's not a bad candidate up here. Every single person up here is going to do the work and is going to represent you. So you have a really hard choice with that first love or all three love. So if I earn your vote, and I, and I really strongly hope that I do, what that means to me and the reason why I'm doing this is when I chaired Imagine Nashua, our very first meeting was during COVID, it was 2020, and it was January 6th. And what happened that day is we had calls and we said, hey, maybe we should cancel this, should we move it, should we bump it to another day? And my answer was no, because we show up not just when it's easy, we show up when it's hard. And that's what I promise to keep doing, is not just making the easy choice, do the hard work and not just making the popular choice, but making the hard choice because that's what you elected us to do. And my shining star and my north star is, is my daughter. I need to make sure that I am proud of the person that I am, that I'm representing, that I'm leaving behind. When we did that master plan in 2020, some of the people that were a part of that aren't with us anymore. And we promised them and our commitment was, we're going to take your work, we're going to roll up our sleeves and we're going to make this the best damn city that we can. And as we had said, you know, for a lot of us, this is, we love it, we love this city, I love this city and I know you do too. And so I hope that to earn your vote on, on Tuesday, please make your plan to vote. The polls are open from 6:30 to 8:00. What is it? Six? Oh my gosh, you have an extra 30 minutes. So six to 8:00 PM, thank you.
Thank you to all of our candidates, Amber Morgan, Shoshana Kelly, Alicia Gregg and Tyler Gouveia, for sharing their ideas and giving voters a chance to hear directly for them. Thank you for stepping up to serve.